City Commission to meeting order. I have a roll call, please.
C. Russell.
Here.
Richard Wing, absent. Commissioner Bowman.
Present.
Commissioner Cummins is absent. Commissioner Ferry is excused. Commissioner Hollins.
Here.
Commissioner Van Hassel.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you all stand and join me in the pledge to our nation's flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Has everybody had a chance to read the October 18 regular meeting minutes? And if so, are there any corrections or omissions?
I have just a typographical correction on in paragraph A. It says, "Meeting minutes" has written, "Commission Hollins," it should be Commissioner Hollins. Other than that, it looks like.
Entertain a motion to accept the minutes as corrected?
I make a motion to correct the minutes with the correction.
A second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Consideration of public comments, those wishing to address the Clean City Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or research the matter for consideration and discussion at a later date. Is there anybody? Or call to the public? Okay. We'll close the call to the public. Item three, old business. Promoting community involvement. Discussion and possible action regarding how the Clean City Commission can promote community involvement in cleanups and recycling.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, we've discussed this item for the last couple meetings. Tonight I did invite Public Affairs Coordinator for the City of Kingman, Colleen Haynes. I think, you know, we've had some discussions about producing some Facebook videos to promote some of these events, and so I guess I'd like to turn it over to her and if you have any questions, but I'll be available if you have any questions for me. Thank you.
Just state your name for the record, please.
I'm Colleen Haynes, I'm the Public Affairs Coordinator for the city. Mr. Chairman and members, I can answer any questions you might have or maybe bring up some ideas that you might have been thinking of and how we could possibly do those for upcoming events. However you'd like to handle that.
We need all the help we can get on trying to figure out what to do to promote community involvement, so anything that you can do to help would be fine, however you want to handle it.
Okay, so, you know, recently with working with Director Owen and then also Mr. Tapia, the head of sanitary, or sanitation, sorry, you know, just as far as promotion, you know, we've done, you know, news releases, Facebook posts on the city page, which obviously you're more than welcome to share on the Clean City Commission. I don't have access or admin power to post to that page. I just post to the city Facebook page. So, you know, like I said, we've done news releases for the cheaper, like the quarterly, you know, is it pickup, the, you know, big bins that we drop off? And as well as like the annual day of giving, which we kind of promoted a little bit just of what the city's part in it was, mostly because it's not really a city event, it's like a United Way event. So we just talked about how the city was involved and what the city did for that event. Moving forward, you know, once I have more, I guess, video or photos to work with from your events, then moving forward, the second time around, we can do better promotions of little PSA videos or little, you know, videos with photos in it of, here's what it looks like, here's the date, and I can release that, you know, on a calendar kind of basis moving up to that event. So, something we can do, and we could even do kind of just a regular kind of PSA, or if you want to do radio stuff, if you have a budget for radio or newspaper, if that's the way you're looking, but, you know, Facebook is very powerful for advertising. Especially, the city's Facebook page has over 2,500 people on it right now, and then you can even expand that to like the entire Kingman area, it wouldn't just be people who are liking our Facebook page or your Facebook page. So, there's a lot of different directions you can go.
Do we have any record as to how many hits we get on the Facebook, city Facebook?
So the city Facebook, yes, like I, we can, oh, do we have? I'm not signed in, but, um, so I'll, here's just a little tidbit. So in the last two months, we have acquired more than 200 new likes, new, new kind of, new people that have liked our Facebook page, which for city government is huge. It's a huge percentage. Since we started posting videos, the kind of interaction with our videos is in the thousands of percentile. It's unheard of, just because we've never done it before. So the city Facebook page is very active with the people that we're reaching, just what we call organically, which we're not paying for any of that right now, we're just putting it out there and people are sharing it. So we haven't paid for anything since I've been here, promotion wise, from the city Facebook page.
We're just, it sort of wits end as to how to get people interested in doing the right thing, I guess would be the word, and being conscious about their garbage and their recyclables, how to handle it. And, you know, we've tried the grocery store business with handing out reusable bags and trying to talk to people, and that doesn't seem to work, they'll take the bag and gone, and we never, we never see the bags ever in use again. I don't know what they do with them. The county fair was probably the best, between the county fair and the day we had the Public Works event down here on, when they lit the arch and all, that was really good. People stopped and talked, and we just got to figure out some way to get to these people, to get them interested and to feel they're doing the city and themselves a benefit by taking an interest in their refuse.
Taking pride in the city and how it looks.
Yeah. And we've just been coming, just stumbling along, we just don't, we're going to try a first Friday night thing to see if that will work, being we sort of have a captive audience, whether they'll take information and throw it in the nearest garbage can, I have no idea. That's sort of the thing we're up against.
So, Mr. Chairman, and members, something that we could, you know, do very easily and, you know, very quickly, is if you want to do some, let's just say a basic video of how the green bins work, do's and don'ts. You know, don't throw your baby diapers in where it says, "Plastic models only," you know, help us help you. We're offering the service for you for free, here's how to do it correctly, because maybe people just don't know. And, I mean, yeah, there are some people out there that are obviously going to use it inappropriately, but maybe people just need tips of a visual of how that looks.
I think, no, that's, definitely, a visual makes a big difference, I think.
Yeah, for sure, and it's got to be short. When people say, "Oh, a five to 10 minute video," no, 30 seconds. Attention spans are, you know, they're, you know, people want tidbits now, so it'd be like a real quick bullet point if you want do's and don'ts of, here's what you put in this bin, here's what you put in this bin, here's where the bins are located, and the video's over. We could also have a flyer that would coincide with that, if you had a booth somewhere handed out of actual pictures of, don't put your pizza boxes in with the cardboard because that taints the whole load, like, don't, just don't. Throw, when in doubt, throw it out, you know, always go back to that. So, there's very easy things that we can do very quickly that aren't really event related, but just information, kind of public service announcement, information we could put out, so.
Those would be good, definitely.
And now, does the radio station, they don't charge us for little?
That I don't know.
Informational kind of things like that?
No, they don't.
I didn't think they did.
You can, the municipality, even like the city and the county and stuff can do public service announcements and stuff for free.
Yeah, public announcements and then.
If I'm piggybacked on Erase, or they advertise my cleanup group by posting Erase, and that we work with Erase, and that's how we get mentioned on there, so that's how, that's how that works, at least for me.
Did you find this, Rob?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're coming straight into another subject again.
Okay.
I thought we should combine these other items, but there is another item later, recycling education.
Well, but I was thinking though, that this page was good for promotional.
Yeah, we found, I think, something else from the valley, Phoenix area.
Okay.
The audience I would like to reach at least that first would be people that would come, we need to entice them to come to the meeting, because we want to clean up the city, but we're only a few and we, I don't even live in the city, but we want to hear what they, what problems that they see that there is, so they can suggest how they need to help us, but we need people. So, we need to promote the meetings and see if we can get those community leaders here to tell, I mean, because we've been up here throwing darts at them, we're missing most of the time, you know. So we got to get those people interested in what we're doing, because the general consensus from what I see is that, of course, it being a government thing, they're not going to do anything, not interested in anything, so we need to change that perception of our commission and stuff. So, we need to get the people here so they can communicate with us and we can communicate with them, and then go out there and organize something based on their input and stuff, but we need people. So we need to promote the meetings, agendas and.
What if we just did?
Ideas and what we think, you know, so that's what I'm looking at anyway, of getting the people here so we can get that discussion going, because if we got one sided discussion here, that doesn't work very well.
Some of it I think we could do and that you could help with is having that discussion on Facebook, because, I mean, just with all the stuff leading up to the election, seeing all the back and forth and everyone's commenting, and you're actually getting people to get out, so some people, it might be hard to get to the meeting, but they're always have their phone with them, you know, and a lot of people are on Facebook in this county. So, you know, getting some of those educational, and if there's, if you know an easier way of doing surveys and, you know, some quick surveys and, you know, it's quick educational bits of, you know, if you're rolling to the grocery, take your stuff out of the cart so it doesn't blow into the desert. Make less work for everybody, if you see something on the ground, pick it up, throw it away in an appropriate.
That would make a nice little video, if we could get a nice little video like that, even animated kind of thing, stick figures if nothing else. Now, are you, do you handle the Facebook for the city?
Mr. Chairman, just, just the city. I don't handle any, I don't handle Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works, any commissions, just the city.
So, you could get something like this on the Facebook then?
Right.
I think that would be a great idea.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as far as promotion, I mean, something you could also do if you wanted to promote just the Clean City Commission is, we could do, you know, a quick video with you or one of the Commissioners of, this is what we do, this is what the group's about, kind of your mission statement, and throw even just a little 15 second video up, and our meetings are held every blah blah blah, you know, day of the month, you know, please come and join us and help us clean up our city, help us, you know, invest in our city and anything along those lines, we could do that.
Yeah, there's a lot of misinformation out that I think needs to be cleared up, and that would be really good.
Who's our admin, are you the admin on, or do we go to Joe Claus to, I'm sorry, I forgot? Yeah, for Clean Cities Facebook.
It's me.
It's you, okay.
And I put a lot of stuff on.
Okay. Okay, great.
I mean, our meetings aren't even published or nothing, other than to go to the agenda thing. Clean City Commission meetings aren't even announced that there's going to be one, is there?
Well, it's on, yeah, they, if you go to like Channel 4 on your television, the government channel, they list all the commissions and when they, when they meet, they don't give any kind of an agenda as what they're going to be discussing, that I know of at any rate.
Agendas are posted.
They are posted.
Just like any other official council meeting. Actually, the recordings are available on the.
YouTube channel?
So, yeah, the recordings of every meeting are available.
And there'll be another, another subject coming up, I think, later on we can talk about. After the first of the year, perhaps getting a liaison that can come to where we have communication between us and the council, that they can relay back to the council, would certainly help. So, any other questions?
Probably those, you know, some videos on the city that talk about, you know, if you want to do like with C. or whoever, about our mission to encourage people to come to us.
So what I can do, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, what I can do is kind of maybe work out just a very kind of small marketing kind of plan or promotion type plan of things we can do, let's say within the next three months, of the video regarding what the commission is about, your kind of mission statement, you know, clearing up maybe some rumors, just a maybe, maybe a 30 second piece, we can just pop on Facebook, you can pop on your Facebook, the YouTube channel, of course, and also Channel 4, and then, you know, we can kind of start working on more of a year round marketing plan so that we know what's coming up, you know, we know, we can do the PSA stuff anytime, but as far as event promotion, you know, having that calendar, seeing what's coming up is very important, so we know we're promoting it, not three months out, but also not three days out either.
So you would work with Rob and Eddie on putting this thing together and?
And we've definitely been in communication, I mean, I have, I mean, the recycling thing, I have, it's in my mental rolodex, as I call it, but as some other things have come up, priorities have, you know, kind of shifted recycling down a little bit, where, you know, the new RV ordinance was, you know, kind of came up, that we needed to do that quickly to inform the public. So, believe me, it is, it is on my list of to do's, it's just sometimes that to do list gets shifted around.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh. Thank you, ma'am.
Super.
So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you'd like to make a motion just to direct staff to work with Colleen on putting together, preparing some Facebook information.
I'll make that motion, that she works with you guys to promote the city, Clean City Commission.
I second.
Motion been made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Moving to item 3B, reusable, reusable bag distribution. Discussion and possible action regarding where and when reusable grocery bags will be distributed by the Clean City Commission.
Wait, can we do A?
Yeah.
Yeah, mine has gone wacky too, I, so I'm just, thank goodness I rely on paper. It flashes up for a minute and then quits.
Well, distribution, I like the idea of the first Friday, let's try that.
We've scheduled the first Friday.
February.
In February.
Right.
Yeah, first Friday of February, so we will work towards that, as far as I can tell. And that's already been voted on?
Well, it was continued to this, to this meeting, so if you'd like to make a motion to direct us to.
Oh, I thought, I thought we already, okay.
So, if you'd like to make a motion to direct us to.
Entertain a motion that.
Prepare for the first Friday.
I'd like to make a motion that staff prepare us for first Friday in that's February.
February. Right here, second?
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded, that we have our first, first Friday reusable bag giveaway. All in favor indicate by saying.
I do have one question.
Okay.
Wait, we gotta, or, do you want to amend the motion?
No, I don't want, is there a fee?
No, no, the fee has been waived from what Sarah said and what Jordan said.
Thank you.
But we will make sure on that, that's, yeah. Okay, back to where we were, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item C, Commissioner Appointments, direction, or, yeah, direction and possible action regarding appointment, appointments to the Clean City Commission.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Commissioner Cummins' term will be expiring in December, along with Vice Chairperson Wing. I believe that Chairman Russell had discussed with Mr. Wing and, I don't know if he'd like to report that.
I called Commissioner Wing and he indicated that he would not be participating with the Clean City Commission.
And at the last meeting, Commissioner Cummins had stated that she wasn't sure, so I haven't had any more communication with her on that.
And she's still not certain on that yet?
I haven't, I haven't talked to her anymore, so I don't know. So, we did have one talent bank application from Mr. Hildebrand. I called him this afternoon, and because of his work schedule, he no longer would be able to serve on the commission. So as it stands, we don't have any talent bank applications, and we're unsure of Commissioner Cummins' status, so we don't really have any record, or any recommendation for action tonight.
Can we table this until the January meeting?
We certainly could table it to the January meeting. We would just have to make sure that we're able to get a quorum here if Commissioner Cummins is not available.
Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to table.
Second that.
Okay, motion been made and seconded, any further discussion? If not.
I do.
You okay?
Can, can that lady help us?
Which lady?
Colleen. For members?
It goes out, I believe it goes on the Channel 4, they list that there are openings in various whatever commissions, and then I know they do that, and she might be able to put it on Facebook as well, I don't know. That's something we can look into. I have, I spoke to one person and let them know that the, there's going to be a vacancy. I don't know, she didn't indicate whether she'd be interested or not, she's been on the Clean City Commission, Margie Hicks, who was, she's been on the Clean City Commission before, I told her there'd be a vacancy, so whether she will put in an application or not, I don't know. I will make sure that she gets one in the event that she wants to. So.
Okay.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I'm working on paper, my machine's cut down. I'm old fashioned here. Commissioner, we went through Commissioner Appointments, okay. Item D, American Recycle and Poster Essay Contest. Discussion and possible action regarding prizes for the American Recycle Poster Essay Contest, which will be awarded at the February 21 Commission Meeting. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commissions, we had set that date for February at the last meeting. I believe that Commissioner Bowman has requested that we discuss the awards. I pulled up the communication from last year, and the awards included certificates of appreciation and gift cards in the amount of $25, $15, and $10 for first, second, and third. And also, $25 gift cards will be received by, oh, by the 10 teachers whose classroom had 10, or had 100% participation in the contest. So I don't know if.
Are we in a position of being able to do the same thing this year?
I believe so.
Okay.
But I make a motion that we do what we did last year as far as the awards are concerned.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, that we do the same as we did last year. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Item four, new business. December Clean City Commission meeting. Let's see, let me get my papers here. Discussion and possible action regarding the possible cancellation of the December 20, 2018 Clean City Commission meeting.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, just, I thought I'd just bring this, you know, council has been canceling meetings in holiday weeks, and I just wanted to bring this as a possibility for the commission. I think we could, I think we could skip the December meeting. It might give us a little bit more time to get some talent bank applications in for the vacant position. We can always set next year's calendar at the January meeting, so I don't know if there's anything. It looks like we've addressed most of the running items that we've had on the agenda so far, so.
That's a time of year when people are out of town a lot anyway, so I think.
Yeah, I'll be out of town for sure.
Well, I make a motion that we cancel the December 20 meeting.
Motion made that we cancel?
I second.
Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Item B, recycling. Discussion and possible action regarding the creation and distribution of recycling educational materials.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, at the last meeting, Commissioner Hollins had requested we put an item on the agenda regarding recycling and recycling education in particular. So, what we did is we kind of went through and just did like an internet search, found some examples, some of the things, kind of in addition to what was discussed in the earlier item, maybe with some YouTube videos or Facebook videos, but just. And so some of these examples, most of these are from the Phoenix area, but, you know, they're colorful, they have pictures, and they pretty much, they show pretty clearly what to recycle and what not to. And we could incorporate this maybe into some updated signage at the drop locations, and so, I figured we would present this information for the commission's consideration.
I think on the, putting that information on the website and stuff also is very cheap advertising, as opposed to having to make signs and flyers and mail them to people and stuff like that. I know there's, the internet, it may be not as well used at where I came from, but it's still a big draw here, and probably keeps growing, so it can't get much cheaper than free to get that, get the word out, and so if we get that on the Clean City Commission and the, on the city website and stuff, plus, like I say, you got to have multiple avenues of advertising to get the people to read it, because, like, if you used every one of them, somebody out there ain't going to read it, and two years from now they say, "Oh, I just seen that," it's like, okay, well, you'll be on. So we, it's got to be an ongoing thing, and like I say, the internet's the perfect place for that, and I recommend we do a lot of advertising on the, on the internet and the websites and stuff, and some signs, but, you know, kind of keep the cost down and, but yet get the word out, because, like I say, we definitely need some signs.
Rob, can we use some of this material for the first Fridays?
Oh, yeah, sure, I think we could, yeah.
Even though it's got the city's name in, it doesn't matter?
Well, I think we would, I guess, I was thinking we would come up with our own based upon some of these examples we found.
Okay.
We'd produce our own pamphlets and handouts.
And we could make part of this part of that video, too.
Well, yeah, yeah. That's on the stick.
This along with what we gave out before. This, along with what we gave out before at the, at the fair, showing where the distribution drop-offs are and, and where the, and what, uh, what recycling is all about, the, the thing that you made up. Uh, and this, along with it, with pictures, pictures speak of a thousand words. I, I like that. Uh, I, I think that'd be really good, to be giveaway at the first Friday.
And if we had, also, if we had maybe samples of the, the yes pile and the no pile, also just physical right there on the table.
Yeah.
You know, it's like, yes, no, clean, dirty.
I think any, any flyers or, or signs and stuff like that, we should also use that to direct them to the websites and stuff so they can see that also, and see the expanded versions of things, as opposed to what's on the sign. So, I think any advertising, it's always good to put the web address in there so they can get additional information.
Yeah, I, I like, I like your idea of putting something on the table. Uh, an old glass mayonnaise jar with a bunch of shaving cream in it, so it wouldn't go rancid, and, and along with a clean mayonnaise jar. This is what it's supposed to, how it's supposed to look, and this is what we're getting, kind of thing. I think that'd be a great idea. So...
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I mean, if you'd like to direct staff to pursue developing some between Facebook videos, printed material, and signage for the drop locations, uh, if you'd like to direct us to pursue that, we will.
Make a motion that staff prepare Facebook and, uh, signage and materials for the event to help promote recycling. Make it clear.
I'll second the motion.
Motion been made and seconded, that staff pursue this, uh, motion. Um, any further discussion?
I got a couple, couple comments here on, I, I got the, uh, re-force recycling there, and this is what's happening in some of the other programs around the nation and...
Can we...
Also, Canada.
Can you vote on the motion that's on the floor?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to vote. Or is this discussing?
This has something to do with...
This is still discussing, so we're not ready to...
Good, that, that could come under announcements.
Well, no, are you trying to say that this is input that it needs to add to...
Well, it's input of why we should do, why we should do, do what we're gonna do.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm, uh, I guess, I, I got lost.
Okay, we're, we're doing this for a purpose, so I just wanna illustrate that we're not the only ones that have this problem, and that other people are doing things to promote and educate...
I see what you're saying.
The people other than us, you know, it's not, it's not just our problem, it's the all-over problem, and people are, are realizing that and doing stuff about it. Well, it's, to me, it's kind of pertinent to what we're, what we're doing here.
So, maybe we could share that with Rob?
Yeah.
So he'd have more, more to pull from, I guess?
Yes, sir, if you have any information, you want to send to me.
Okay, and Greensboro, North Carolina, they, they launched an education campaign to reduce contamination in the recycling stream. So, again, getting this information out obviously is gonna help. They, they also inspect their carts and, and stuff like that, and remove them if they, they need. And then, uh, Scott Air Force Base, Illinois, they permanently closed their drop-off recycling after repeated dumping of non-recyclable materials. So, that's all pertinent to why we wanna do this educational thing and, and get the stuff out there, because it's, it's important and impacts.
This information is for staff to, to...
They might be able to, you might be able to include it.
They can if they desire. Okay, I'm ready to vote.
All right, all right. All, all those in favor of the, the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Motion carried. Item 5, Announcements by Commission members. Limited announcements available, attendance and, at conferences and seminars, request for agenda items for further meetings. Mr. Hollis?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Bennett, excellent.
Have a good holiday. The plural, Thanksgiving and Chris, and, you know...
Holidays.
All, all of the December holidays, since we won't be here.
Commissioner Bowman?
E, well, just that, that, uh, poster and essay contest, that we bring it up so we have the dates again. That's the only thing.
Put it on your agenda? For January?
You know, for January, so we don't forget February.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
And, cause, well, we gotta, by January, we'll have to, uh, set up judging the, the posters and, and the essays and all that anyway, so...
Yeah, that's, I think, the 7th.
We did set a date on that, didn't we, for...
Yes.
When it has to be...
Yeah, we have the dates, and we'll make sure of that.
The only thing I had was that little flyer that I passed out. Uh, I'm, I'm going to try and see if I can, um, get more information on it. Uh, there was one little plant they set up, from what I understood, in Stockton. I don't know how big of an area it, it took care of, but it was like in the $3 million, uh, price range. Uh, there was no, they, I haven't found out what this plant at Honolulu, uh, cost yet. Uh, that, that's something I'm gonna try and pursue and find out, because when, when we figured what a MRF was estimated 6 million, I thought something like this might, as long as it, it doesn't pollute, uh, this might be something to look forward, look toward, maybe down the road a few years from now, who knows? That was about, about all I had, I think. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?